I was gonna say our afternoon session, our special council meeting. It's Tuesday, April 30th, 2025, and I will pass it to Clementine. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I'll pass it to Clementine to do rule call and to share announcements with the public.
Councilmember Barber, present, councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Rash.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And for everybody's information, you can find out more about participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees, please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting, and thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Clementine. With that, we'll move on to our presentation item number one, receive presentation from C Monterey FY 2024-25 mid-year performance and group sales trends. That'll pass to Hans for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Rob O'Keefe and Alyssa and Teresa from C Monterey. And C Monterey is one of our main partners in ensuring that we have a thriving hospitality industry. And they are actually responsible for everything. So with that, Rob O'Keefe.
Kind of broad. There's a lot out there. I'm okay not being associated with. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I really appreciate it. And on behalf of our team, we really appreciate it and our board. Again, my name is Rob O'Keefe. I'm the president and CEO of C Monterey. And I have been part of the organization since 2013, so I have a pretty long run with the community and the communities that we work with. And so we put together a very top line overview, and I promised to keep, I promised Nat and Hans I'd keep this tight. This not running, it's not moving. So the public comment meter, that's usually keeps me on time. So I'll try to, I try to stay on time without it. We can just run it three times. No, no, it's fine. Already ready to put the timer on. I get it. Okay, so top line, and then I hope to have any questions that you have and any discussion or anything you want to elaborate on. This is sort of a mashup of a mid-year report that you received now a couple of months ago. Sure, I'm doing this right? Not yet. Okay, let's go back once. Yeah, I can do it maybe. Yep, there we are. So just introduction to C Monterey, we are the tourism organization for all of Monterey County. We work with 10 jurisdictions, including yours and the county and eight other cities. So on any given day or week, we have the pleasure of working with at least 54 elected officials, and it keeps us hopping. But it's important to note that because what are we here and why are we here as an organization? Ultimately, tourism, and some of you may have heard me say this, it's not all about the tourist. It's about the resident. It's about the communities that we work in. And we went through a pretty big shift with some help from several of you two years ago when we launched a new strategic plan that looked out to the future. And in that shift, we said, who are we? What are we really here to do? And we significantly changed our vision. It went from being something like to promote Monterey County as a really cool destination. It changed something a lot deeper, a lot more compelling, a lot more important to all of us. And at the center of that is a thriving tourism economy that enriches, the purpose is to enrich Monterey County's economic vitality and quality of life. And that's really our purpose for being here. Our mission is to do they. So what that looks like for the city of Monterey, we create these reports for each of our jurisdiction partners. Along with the county of Monterey, you're our biggest partners in terms of investment and in terms of what you have at stake in your tourism economy. So I know you can all see this a little bit better than I can, so correct me if I'm wrong, but then I'll get new glasses soon. You received this report about a month and a half ago. And what it says is you put in X amount of dollars to get Y amount of response characterized in a variety of different ways. I'll just give you a few examples from that. In the upper left corner there, economic impact from our group marketing program. Economic impact at the mid-year point, because I'm going to show you some numbers later, and you're going to say, how come those numbers just changed? I'll tell you that in a minute. Over $38 million of economic impact. That's people who come here for meetings. We work with them to generate the leads. We work with all the hotels in the city, but in particular with the Monterey Conference Center. We are the sales and I used to just say the marketing organization, we are the sales and marketing organization for the Monterey Conference Center. And the purpose of the Monterey Conference Center is to drive overnight visitation, and those people come here and they spend money, lots of money. In fact, the person who's coming here for a group spends 158% more than the leisure visitor. So it's very valuable business, but it's very competitive business. So you see there at the mid-year, we helped create a lead, we helped land the lead, we helped convert the lead. And when the lead goes definite, we estimate the economic impact. So this isn't just the leads that we generated. These are the leads that actually converted. And you can see there that the leads generated over 40,000 room nights from a variety of dozens and dozens of leads that we brought in. And for the MCC, just a little bit below there, MCC alone, we, in the first half of the year, helped create 76 leads, booked 31 of them, and of that $38 million, that $24 million just for the conference center. So that's a subdivision of that $38 million. You can see a lot of other things on here. I won't spend a ton of time on it. But because you're a jurisdiction investing partner, every business that's hospitality related in your city gets a free membership. We used to charge $500 for a membership. We said, we gotta get out of that business. We're already working with you. You're creating the platform for them. And because of that, we have over 1,200 businesses who are members now. And in the city, it says 389, but it's 394. There she is, that's Alyssa. It's her job to go out there, knock on doors, do whatever it takes to build that membership. So 389, and of those 389, most of them are small owner operated, no sales department, no marketing department. We're here to do that for them and for you. Up the upper top right, the last one I'll call out on this slide, partner site conversion. Sounds like a very technical marketing term. It sort of is, I guess. It's how many people come to our website? And then go to a business, one of those 394 businesses. We don't really worry about how long someone's on our website, cmonterey.com. I want them to come to our website. I want them to be looking for something. I want them to find it and go there, book something, reserve something, do something that's going to create a transaction. First half of the year, we had ever, over 72,000 people come to our website and went to one of your business's website. Very important for us because that is the closest we can come in that capacity to driving a transaction. And then there's a lot of other things you can see on there, total web sessions, PR value, almost over $377,000 of ad equivalency. What's ad equivalency? If we run a story and it has that much real estate, how much would it cost you to buy an ad for that much real estate? And that's the equivalency. It's an industry standard. There's other ways to measure it. That's one that's a little bit easier to understand and tell a story about. So in the rest of this report, here is, this is just the dog and pony part of the show. This shows you the things, the types of things that we've done. Obviously, it's not exhaustive, or we, this presentation would be 100 pages long and not 15 pages long. But paid advertising, social media and public relations, we're showing up, you're showing up in places like Forbes and a variety of other places, New York Times, other media placements that we're getting out there about positive coverage about the city of Monterey. On the business development side, a little bit more about that. Total economic impact, this is that point where the numbers just switch. The total economic impact through March of this year, so we updated it before we sent this to Nat, it was over $58 million of group sales bookings for the city of Monterey. That's a combination of MCC and single property. And we also work with the Hyatt, and we helped sell their conference center as well. So big numbers and very important. We also bring in groups, larger groups. Councilmember Garcia, you welcomed one of those groups, and we welcome you all to, when you have the chance, please come and make these people feel welcome. We bring in, we brought in 250 attendees for MPI, NCC, lots of acronyms in this business. I won't, I won't go on and explain all of them because it would take too long. But Cal SAE Elevate, 450 attendees. This was just a few weeks ago. That one I got to say, welcome. It was their most successful in terms of registration that they've ever had in the history of their organization. And there's a really good reason for that. And it's not just because we got great sales folks, it's because you got great product. You have an amazing city, and we're in an amazing destination, and people are coming here for the meeting. And we try our best to get them to come a day early or stay a night extra. We call that, you know, I'm gonna, you know where I'm going, Mayor. One more night, one more night. And because one more night, it's not just about getting more people here, it's getting people who will stay longer. And conference attendees typically do that. And we are, and we were told, we got a lovely letter, I think you were copied on the letter or sent the letter, and I was copied on the letter, from Cal SAE's president. It was just amazing. And the reason is because we are an attendance building destination. When I have the meeting here, the numbers go up in attendance. They have it in Fresno, they're still good. They're just not Monterey good. And, and we love that, and we need that because we are a magnet for those types of events, those conferences, and they help fuel quality of life and economic vitality. In other areas going forward, we published last September, a program called MCT 2030. Very cleverly, Monterey County Tourism 2030. We put a lot of work into that. And the goal there was to look, where are we going to end up by the end of the decade? What's going to change? How can we treat the future as something that we can shape versus something that just happens to us? So we did a lot of analysis. We did a resident sentiment study. We did a visitor profile study. We did interviews and surveys with a variety of folks, some of you were involved and some others, to get a sense of where are we going and how do we do this together? The resident sentiment study, we actually asked residents, including resident associations, what do you think of tourism? And we're like, well, the good news is almost 80% said, we get it. Tourism is absolutely important for our destination, and it's also important that we promote that. We found out a lot of other things about where we want to go and what we should focus on. So the plan is sharpening our focus in where we're going. I mentioned the studies. We looked at the challenges and the opportunities, and I think challenge typically is just the flip side. Opportunity is what that really is. And we talked about the community-wide collaboration for planning and implementation. So we have a lot of challenges. I was here not so long ago talking about international and where we're at, definitely a challenge, but we're going to keep at it. International business, they spend two to three to four times more than what a conference center attendee is spending. And we've made really good inroads, Canada, UK, Western Europe, and now we're looking at the Pacific Rim to invest further there. We gotta keep at it, right? The pie might be shrinking. There's not a lot we can do about that right now. But each slice is that much more valuable. So we're going to stay in there and we're going to focus on that. I just went to our board last week, said, are we all in on this? And everyone is in on this. We gotta do it. There's other things that are driving economics uncertainty. We have to see those things and come up with game plans to deal with them. A real quick look at the competitive landscape. A lot of folks say, I get this a lot, why do we even have to market? Look at how beautiful we are. I just got done saying how we're great. We are to attract attendees. Well, if you've been to Santa Barbara or Napa lately, they're pretty beautiful too. And this is a chart that shows you what their budget firepower is. This, in the middle column there, budget per room, that's how much, how many dollars that each of these competitors have to spend per year, per room. And you can see where we're at right now, about $953, $953. And we're going to go at the beginning of July 1, a little bit higher, just under Sonoma. Still lower than I'd like, but we punch above our weight, and I'm very proud of what we have to offer and what we can do with it. But it's an uphill climb always. And with your partnership and your investment, we're going to remain competitive. Some key aspects of MCT 2030. We have to raise the tide for all. We've got more hotel rooms coming online. We've got to fill those hotel rooms in addition to keeping the ones we already have built. There's not a GM in this county that wants to lose market share to someone building a place across the street, and we're on with that. We need to attract visitors from further away. If they come in here on a plane, they're staying longer, they're doing more, they're spending more, and they're typically not bringing their car. Traffic mitigation, that's important to us, but it means we have to work more with our transportation partners, MST, TAMSTI, and MRY, who we work with very closely. And evolving our events, making existing events work harder for the destination and attract new events when we need them in the off season. And this gives you an idea of our marketing reach. We have to reach further out. We have a lot of drive market, about 80%. That's good, but we need to bring people in from further away. We need to reach people. We need to get people here that have never even heard of Monterey County. If we're going to be successful in the future, and we have the ingredients to do that between our public-private partnership with our jurisdictions and the hotel assessment. That's what's going up in July 1. Give us a little bit more firepower. Responsible travel, always been important for us. We're sort of a beacon for others around the state. I myself was on one of the first ever sustainability committee for Cal Travel. We are repackaging our program. It used to be called Sustainable Moments. It's now called The Right Path. And you're going to see more and more of that, especially in the summer months. We put billboards up in the Bay Area to educate people before they get here, show an otter, say, adore responsibly. But when you get here, we want to remind them. So you're going to see that same ad and other ads like it on MST buses and other places throughout the destination. So a lot more on that coming up. And I don't know if I hit the 10-minute mark, but I hopefully got close. That was a lot in a short period of time. I am very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation and a lot of good information. I will open it up to the council for questions. Please, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Rob, for the presentation. I have a few questions for you. Not, not in any specific order. I'm wondering if you have even a general sense, a specific, or not specific, general metrics perhaps attained through the visitor profile study of repeat business, repeat visitors? Where are they coming from? You know, who are these folks who keep coming back?
Yeah, so the, most of the folks that keep coming back, and I think that it's north of 75% predominant visitors are coming, are coming back. And they're coming from drive markets and the short haul flight markets. So the non-stop to Seattle, Dallas, Denver, San Diego, Las Vegas. That, most of that's coming from those markets. And the satisfaction score, as we ask, you know, did you enjoy yourself? 99% said they did, and they'll be back. So we do really good once we get in here to make them want to come back.
And I guess as a follow-up to that, in terms of reasons why they're coming back, they enjoyed it. What, what, what did they enjoy? I mean, I think I know, but just in general, what, what are they, what are they saying?
So the number one and two reasons people come here in the first place, number one scenic beauty, number two outdoor adventure. It's the ocean, it's the land, it's the hiking, it's the ability to get away and feel like you've gotten away. And you've have, you know, take deep breaths, that type of thing. They also comment on how friendly people are and service levels, and they generally have a really good time once they were here. So we might use the outdoors, and you see a lot of our advertising, we put out like things that are taking place. I once told Hans, the number one social post we had in one quarter was deer on beach. They want that. They want to be in that setting, and they have a really good time in other places. And if someone's coming here for that, we try to do what we call cross-pollinate. So if someone's coming here for, say, the aquarium, we want them to go to a spa or go shopping or hit a trail. And so whatever they're coming here for, if they're going to golf in Pebble Beach, we want them to come to Alvarado Street, do some shopping, some strolling, go to the Wharf, go to Canary Row. So whatever they're coming here for, and those are the top two reasons, we promote the other things. And you know this, when you go on a trip, you might be going for one or two things, and then you're like, what else am I going to do? We have an app that helps people while they're here figure that question out. So I would say very, very positive reviews and very, very high intention to return.
And a general sense of what folks might be saying about entertainment in the area?
It's not in the top five.
Yeah, okay.
And one of the things that are people looking, which we don't try to be, we're not a nightlife destination. When they're coming for events like the Jazz Festival, obviously that's very high on the list, and we have very high repeat visitations there. Could we do better in that? Absolutely. That's one of the things when we talk about taking an existing event, I'd love to take the Jazz Festival and have it at the fairgrounds, but have a pop-up trio one night on Canary Row and have someone show up at Cooper's Malera, doing something else and spread that out. When someone's here for the Pebble Beach Food and Wine, we brought a group in of those very, very valuable meeting planners. We took them from Pebble Beach and we brought them here, and we brought them into Carmel Valley, and we sort of spread the love that way. So if your, if your point specifically is about entertainment, it means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Could we up our game there? I would say probably, yeah.
Let me see if I have additional questions here. Oh, so kind of shifting gears here a little bit, any, anything that you could share with us in terms of possible impacts to business, given the share with us in terms of, um, possible impacts to business, given the national political climate?
Yeah, we don't have data on that yet. We have some anecdotal things that we've heard. I've seen some, uh, emails that were sent to me from hoteliers who got emails from past visitors who aren't coming back from Canada. It hasn't leveled up to the point where we're seeing a serious impact on overall business, but we're keeping an eye on it. 7% of our visitations international, a fraction of that is Canada. We want to grow it back to pre-COVID when it was 13%. So this is another bump in a very rocky road that we're encountering, but like I said, we're going to continue to stay on it. And people are going to continue to come here. We want to make sure they come to Monterey.
Thank you. Please.
Thanks, Rob. I'm trying to better understand the city of Monterey's investment to what I believe is now C-Monterrey, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, that's it.
So, um, on our page 36, it has jurisdiction investment of 1.8 for the city, 1.8 million. And then it has the Monterey County Tourism Improvement District, City of Monterey, 3.5. So kind of break that out for me a little bit better.
Sure. So the TOT is obviously a transient occupancies tax. It's a tax that the hotels charge to their guests. And what we ask for and what that 1.8 million comes from is a 6% investment less the 350,000 that goes back for the renovation to the conference center.
Okay.
And the TID is an assessment. It's not a tax at all. It is an assessment that the hotels put on themselves to boost marketing promotion. It's a business district. Um, and so the assessment was just renewed in 2023 and will extend to 2033. So it's the combination of those two, that's the public-private, um, but one is a tax and one is an assessment.
Okay. So, so, um, what I just heard you say that, that 3.5 million is really from the hotels. It's not from the city at all.
That is.
I mean, it's not from the municipality.
That, that's correct. In fact, about 65% of our budget is TID.
Mm-hmm.
And about 35% is TOT holistically, when you count everybody.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I loved it when you went to sustainability a couple of years ago. And I, I thought that was just a brilliant move and, um, that adore responsibly, that picture of that honor is like the cutest one ever. So spread that around. Um, I was also impressed with your brochure that you had pictures of Solidad and King City. And it made me realize some of your sustainable trips could be, um, and you're probably already doing this. People come to Monterey and then they take the side tours and one could be the Pinnacles. You could get a bus tour to the Pinnacles and really that, that's going to be a real growing market, I think.
It is. And you know who wants that? Uh, not just the travelers want that, they want off the beaten path.
Right.
In our resident sentiment study, they said traveler dispersion, spreading people out.
Right.
Will help them enjoy their own home and their space, uh, and, um, as well. So very important to everybody.
Right, right, great. And of course, the, the usual ones, I mean, family, you could get families to, um, have the kids spend the night at the aquarium. I know that already happens, or Elkhorn Slough. And then, you know, now you probably get tours of Vistra. People will want to be touring Vistra to see what's going on with that.
Probably happen.
Yeah.
They're, they're Chernobyl.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, so.
Ground zero. And then, um, you know, the overnights at Monterey Zoo, which I want to take the grandkids to as soon as I can. So lots of great ideas. Um, I noticed the picture with your ARPA initiatives of the, um, the new Minneapolis Light Rail and just a plug for Light Rail whenever we can do that, please. And then, um, let's see. I, I love it that you want the one more night, long, longer stay because the environmental impact, of course, is, is negligible for that one more night. So we really do need to focus on that. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. All right. Any other questions? Please, Dr. Barber.
Uh, thank you so much. I always enjoy when C-Monterrey comes and gives, uh, the presentation of all the things that you're doing. Um, you don't, I mean, for, I was just looking at that, the dollar amount for what you're doing with the ROI for her, uh, room night is still great. Um, and so to give more, I could see you doing a whole lot more for what you're actually getting in return when you look at comparing what it is even in Sonoma. But I had a question about a couple of things. And we kind of talked about this a little bit during the public comment time, one time before, about 20, between now and 2036, there's going to be a lot of sporting events, uh, Olympics and different other things where normally we would get a lot of international visitors. So how are you planning for that? I know you kind of touched a little bit on it when you did your public comment last time, but can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have, um, first of all, we have, uh, a team in the UK, so a representation firm uh, that we've had now for about 18 months. And when you're coming here from the UK or Europe or South Korea or Japan, you're typically using a tour operator or a travel agent. And you're booking through them. We have relationships with, um, of dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, where we're working with them so that they are up to date on what's coming up. So the Olympics coming up in '28, they're already planning that. These operators like what, what types of itineraries? We work with them to develop those so they can do some Olympics in LA and then they can work their way up the coast. Um, the Super Bowl just being up the street next year. We're in a, a really great spot where the Super Bowl is before the Pebble Beach Pro-Am. And there's some challenges and not as many celebrities and the, the shift that's taking place there. But there's still a lot of opportunity because we're after the Super Bowl. And if I have my way, and I don't know that we have the budget for it, but if I have my way, the winning quarterback would be asked, where are you going now that you've just won the Super Bowl? And I'd want to hear them say Monterey.
Okay.
But, um, but yes, we're, so we're, we're sort of opportunistic with those things. So we will have specific programs that are designed to leverage as far away as LA, as close to Santa Clara to, to, to boost those things. We've been working with, we've tried to work with FIFA. It's sort of hit and miss with them. Uh, we're still going to try to get our share, what takes place up north. Um, but that, that cost is a little bit out of range. On the other hand, the men's, uh, open in 2027 at Pebble Beach. We're going to do a program like we did with the women's open in 2023, where like I said, there's something taking place at Pebble. Our goal is to get the spotlight on the rest of the destination. We did a really good job then. And we're already budgeted to do the, do that again in a bigger way.
Okay. Uh, excellent. So how is technology playing a part of having more tourism engagement when they're here? Are we, I heard you said the app.
Hmm.
Are there other plans for any other technology with AI and everything being, um, a bust?
So, um, uh, I'm so over the app. It's AI. It's all AI. No. That was jokes, jokes. Um, the, uh, we are one of the first destinations in the state of California. We're actually the first destination in North America to integrate AI through this company called Mind Trip into our new website, which just launched in December. So we're actively using AI to help boost getting people here. Um, AI is tricky because you never know what people are going to ask, but the more people ask, the more it learns, language learning. Um, so we've integrated that now. If you go to our website, cmonterrey.com, there's this little thing that comes up on the side and it says, ask me anything. That's helping, we think, we're still measuring different ways of doing it. That's helping create more of those partner conversions. Like, so if someone says, I need a hotel for weddings and you, you put that in, it'll serve up six or eight options. Each of those options, just click on it and it can take you to that website, which is what we want. So AI is going to, AI, I think for, excuse me, for all of us, is going to be a game changer in ways we haven't even imagined yet. Um, and I, I don't look at it as something to be scared of. What I'm scared of is what, um, uh, one of those genius folks, I saw at a conference a year and a half ago. He said, you don't need to be afraid of AI. You need to be afraid of your competitor who's using it to beat you. So we jumped forward on, on that one and, um, we're going to continue. It's great with meeting planners. So it helps shorten the timeframe for the information search that they're looking for. So big on the app and AI.
Okay, excellent. And last question. I know you said you had a conversation with the community and local businesses. And you had the 80% that basically said, yeah, we get it. We, we like tourism. But I'm wondering, what else did you glean from that conversation of how community and local businesses can be involved and what that looks like and what their temperature is on that?
So I'll tell you where the hotspots are. The, the temperature is very high. Infrastructure, transportation and housing. Um, they came back and said, those are our three biggest challenges. Um, for us, you know, some of those aren't our lane necessarily, but we do act like as a catalyst and we do research to help you all understand what's being said. Um, transportation is something I think we all need to continue to work on because transportation is something that, um, is very important to residents and travelers. These are things we work very closely, as you know, with MCHA. And these are things they're at the forefront on. And they're out there active every day on issues like that. We're not an advocacy organization, but we are an education organization. So when we come up with a resident sentiment study and we come up with those types of findings, feed them over to MCHA and we say, all right, what can we do with this?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to refer to page 20 in the packet of what you submitted. And that's the page where it's situation analysis.
Hmm.
Uh, if you could, do you have that slide you could put up? Um, it's California Business Travel Forecast and it's got a chart, business versus leisure. Is that one that you have in a slide deck? It's just in the staff's presentation. Now, are you looking packet page? Is, will that be helpful? Page 33?
Just give me one moment to pull it up and I'll.
Yeah, packet page 33. Rob, while we're doing that, I wanted to set up and the focus of this question has to do with business versus leisure and our shift to leisure included in terms of our mission. In this chart, it isolates, uh, and goes back as the benchmark of 2019, which is what everybody does. We look at 2019 as having fabulous numbers that we can compare. And then if we forecast out where we're at in '25 and '26, the comparison of the numbers to 2019, it shows, um, a large number of business travel. And I think we're almost back to leisure travel, but we're not yet back to the full business travel that we were seeing in 2019. So if you could address some of those things that, what C-Monterrey is doing to target the business traveler for convention business. Um, and I know there's a lot of different things, but if you could touch on just a few things that increases the number on business, because travel seems to be kind of organically working its way back, but the business travel is still well below 19.
Yeah, so, um.
You could give us a couple of anecdotes from that.
Absolutely. Uh, the, what we're doing as an organization and some of the numbers I shared with you, that's attributable to what we're doing. We also work with hotels and what they're doing and there's, you could sort of subdivide it. What's happening for group travel in entirety for our destination and what part we're doing? The part we're doing, we're actually back to 29, uh, 2019 levels. We just cleared that hurdle, I think, months ago. In terms of we count leads and conversion and our pace report, business, when we book a lead or a piece of business, it might be on the books for 2026 or 2027. That's our pace report. And so we're on pace now, uh, pretty much the same, maybe a little bit more than 2019. Overall, what's happening, and we take that from a third-party resource called Star Reports. And we look at that and that shows us what the overall destination is and what other destinations are. And several of them are still lagging. So to your point, I think the heart of your question is what are we doing? That's a very important piece of business. What are we doing to get it back? The number one way we can create meetings here is by getting meeting planners here. We have an office in Chicago, we have an office in Dallas, and we have an office in LA. Plus we have a team here and Teresa Savage is right back there and she leads our team as the Senior Vice President of Business Development, Business Operations. Um, we, and I mentioned the Pebble Beach Food and Wine, we use that leisure event to get 15 high value. When I say high value, they book very lucrative meetings, let's call them. And we then cross-pollinate and we get them. And so we're using something and we're creating it as a way to show people the destination. We also do things where we send people all over the place. Our guy in Chicago was in Kansas City, talking to some, uh, folks, I think, just like we, last week, and he's going to DC next. Um, there are pockets where you want to go and cities you want to go where those meeting planners. So you go out to them. We have trade shows like IMAX. IMAX happens in Las Vegas every year in October. It's the biggest of its kind. You show up in a big booth and you're fancy and you, and you meet people who are coming through. You make a bunch of, uh, appointments. We bring hotels with us. So we create that platform that makes it viable for them to spend not too much, or co-op programs. Um, so we help bring them in. But the main thing that we do is find inventive ways to get people to come here and see the destination for themselves. Because once you're here, we know we're way closer to closing a deal with them, but we do a combination of both.
Yeah. Um, thank you. And that's where I wanted us to touch on because this next piece on this same chart, um, it has the Monterey County Travel Indicators and Forecasts. And I think this is very important data. I think the council would appreciate a refresher and a reminder of the, um, chart of the business, leisure, ADR and RevPAR. If you would touch on the significance of ADR and RevPAR. And then I think when you do a deep dive, you realize that the RevPAR is going up and the ADR is going up, which I think several years ago, that was the number one target of C-Monterrey and hoteliers looking at what's happening with the rate, longer stay rate. So if you could just touch on those acronyms, I think that's helpful for us to go.
Yeah. So, um, and then occupancy. So OCC is occupancy and there's, there's a, a teeter totter thing with occupancy where you're trying to drive up occupancy. Um, but you also want to drive up rate. That's a little difficult. So they, 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 um, sort of optimize those two things. And we've seen occupancy, it's not back to where we were in 2019, we're 73% occupancy countywide. Uh, last time we measured a calendar year, we were 66, 67%. So we still have some work to do. Now, the city of Monterey is a little bit higher than that. Um, so you're balancing occupancy with rate. ADR is average daily rate. So it's basically the average you get for a, however long the stay. RevPAR is revenue per available room and it's a demonstration of total revenue associated with that room rental. So of course you want to, you want to boost that up as much as possible. You want to boost ADR up as much as possible, but you don't want to sacrifice too much rate. And we saw in, uh, COVID times where we had pretty good occupancy and really good rate.
Right.
Really good rate.
Yeah.
Well, we knew that that, that was going, that roller coaster had a downside to it as well. And we work with hotels to share the data that we have so they can see when that's coming and prepare accordingly. So rate from the highs of COVID have come down, but we're still well above where we have been in the past. Rate we're doing well on, RevPAR we're doing good on, but we've got to focus on occupancy. Of course, we don't set rates. We don't make beds. We don't make drinks at the bar. We're not in the business. They're doing it. They set the rates. But, um, we do share information so they can see where they're going and we can maybe help them. And they come to us and they say, I need more group. Right? I got, I got all the leisure I can handle. I want more group. And group, sometimes you give them a little bit of rate break because they're going to spend money on AV and banquet and all these other things. And so it's, it's sort of those levers that you have to work with. And we don't directly control the levers, but we give them information that helps them and they tell us what they're looking for most. And so we have been very focused on bringing group back and I'm, I, I think we're, um, I was just told that we're almost to our annual goal for leads this year, which is great. And then I'm going to ask, what more can we do? So I haven't asked Teresa there yet, but now she knows it's coming.
Yep, she heard it. She heard. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, just on the, the chart that's, that's on the slide while it's up here. Um, it would be good, I'm not sure if it's possible to have this for just the city of Monterey, this data just for the city of Monterey. Cause I think it would be helpful to distinguish that, parse that out as comparison to the entire county.
The city of Monterey is the most predominant. We use the city of Monterey as a barometer for everybody else, for the most part. There's some, the, some of our jurisdictions are too small for it to really factor into what you're seeing. So this is predominantly the city of Monterey.
The city of Monterey.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, for sake of time, I'm going to bring it out to public comment. Um, we have, uh, another big item coming up tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Thanks again, Rob, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, for those that want to speak on this item, um, what we do is we identify those folks at the beginning of the public comment period. Um, we'll do a cutoff and once the cutoff occurs, only those people will be able to speak. So this is the time to identify yourself if you'd like to speak. I'm going to check with folks on Zoom. And it's speaking specifically on this item, on, on the C-Monterrey presentation. So I'm going to check with folks on Zoom to use the raise hand function while you're navigating your way there. I'm going to check in the chamber. Anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak on this item, I'm going to ask if you can step up, stand up to the left of the podium. If you would like to remain seated, you can just identify yourself by raising your hand, but it would be easier if able and willing to stand up to the left of the podium. Yep. Anybody else in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? Okay, so we have the four. Anybody else? Any last takers? All right. So we'll go ahead and cut it off in the chamber. I'll check on Zoom. I'll do a countdown for folks to five, four, three, two, one. We have one on Zoom. I'm going to bring it to two minutes for each person. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Hi, um, nice to be here. I'm Lauren. I run the, my museum down the street. Um, and for us, this is a really important. And for us, this is a really important topic, because we're a small nonprofit. Obviously, we've been around for twenty-seven years, so people know about us. But they don't know about us until they get here. And they don't know about us until they're planning a trip. And we have sixty thousand visitors who come to the museum every year. And about forty percent of those are tourists and they're hearing about it from C Monterey. They came to a conference with their, they came to a conference and now they want to bring back their family to experience Monterey County. Some of the things that we use as resources is they have a great website. Our website's good. You know, my husband's an IT guy. But their website's great. And so it gives us the opportunity to post events that we have and really showcase what we're doing to a really broad audience that we could never do with, with a budget like ours. We also partner the downtown partners with a flash your badge program. And so that allows us to get some, some of the people visiting the conference center to come for a very small discount and the impact is significant. Also, we, we appreciate that it's free to us. As a small business, very few things are free. We belong to the chamber and all the things, but we have to pick and choose. And every year, we can't belong to all of them. This allows us to be a big player on a really good team, even with a small budget. So thank you so much for all of your support and we appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Dr. Paige Veron. I am on the Monterey County Hospitality Association Board of Directors and also the Executive Director for the Sustainable Hospitality and Tourism Management Program at Cal State Monterey Bay. Our program actually prepares career-ready workforce equipped to manage tourism in a way that benefits the environment, communities and the economy. Hence the sustainability in our name, which aligns us nicely with C Monterey. Tourism is more than an industry here in Monterey County. It's really essential to our economy, our environment and our way of life. Alongside agriculture, hospitality and tourism forms the backbone of our community's prosperity, supporting jobs, small businesses and cultural vibrancy. At Cal State Monterey Bay, we prepare students like Alicia, who I have here with me today, not only to stop, step into leadership roles, but to drive innovation, sustainability and community stewardship in the hospitality field. Our work is, is possible because of a healthy tourism economy, one that C Monterey works tirelessly to support. So continued investment in C Monterey is really critical. Their efforts keep Monterey competitive, ensuring that visitors from across the country and the world continue to choose our beautiful region, benefiting residents, students and businesses alike. Thank you for your leadership, your partnership and your commitment to a thriving future in Monterey.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alicia Ibarra and I am proud to be a Pebble Beach Scholar and a student in the Sustainable Hospitality and Tourism Management Program at CSMB. Being part of this program has opened up so many opportunities for me, including internships, mentorships and hands-on experiences, all because of the incredible support from our local hospitality industry. Thanks to organizations like C Monterey and partnerships with businesses throughout the region, students like me can prepare for a career right here in Monterey County. I'm excited to be part of the future of hospitality and I'm grateful for the opportunities that the city's investment in tourism creates for students, businesses and the entire community. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Stephen Wales and I'm here with the Monterey Hospitality Association, also speaking on my own behalf as a small business owner. We're down in South County and a lot of our business relies on kind of the influx of tourism. I'm not about massive amounts of drinking, but you can sell to tourists because they come through and you can sell a lot to them. All of our products are named after physical locations in Monterey County. And part of the reason we can do that is because of the public good that C Monterey provides. It adds value to Monterey on the face of it. You know, so I think part of what C Monterey does is improves the quality of people coming here. It provides an economic opportunity that otherwise would not be provided to other places in South County. I see, don't have the same sort of economic sustainability that Monterey has because of its tourism industry. So a robust tourism industry is not just a resource for businesses like mine, but many others as well. Thank you very much for your time. No, no, yeah, no, that was as much as I needed to say. Thank you. Oh, Frog's Distillery. Yeah, we're, we're a small craft distillery down in Gonzalez, so if I have a little bit of time.
Say the name, say the name.
The Frog's.
Say the name again.
Frog's and Distillery. Yeah, yeah, we're a small craft distillery down in Gonzalez. And a lot of our business plan is based on this kind of sustainable sourcing. So we get all of our products from California in general. It's just, part of the reason for that is because we can get a higher quality product in California at a cheaper price point when we go directly to the sources. And I mean, everything about our business is, is focused on trying to be sustainable, locally sourced. And, you know, it pairs well with what Monterey does in general. I mean, I think the future of our businesses down in Monterey, I mean, like, we're close to the San Luis C Highlands, where all of this great wine is. And I've talked to people down there about trying to get more tourism opportunities down there, like a visitor's center or something like that. But it's always being, you know, pushed down the road. I mean, you know, a visitor's center on one oh one would give people a reason to stop further places down in South County and go to these vineyards where these amazing tasting rooms are in the first place. That's what a lot of people talk about anyway. Thank you.
Normally, we get a sample from people that.
I.
Come see you.
Oh, yeah, 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 no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go to our online caller.
Mr. Glenn, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Kent Glenser. I'm a resident of Old Town Monterey. Number one, thank you for this presentation. The most, the first thing I want to say is I just want to thank the city council and the city of Monterey for over the last three or four years, bringing together really important conversations about both social and economic concerns. And I moved here in 2011 and over the last few years, this has become a much better balance. Thank you. The next thing is, I love Gino's comment or question about entertainment. And I, I, I just think there's a lot to learn from South by Southwest in Austin, Texas. Not now. South by Southwest is reducing, they're pivoting. They're, I'm, I'm talking about South by Southwest twenty-five years ago. And I think there's a lot for Monterey to learn from that. And then my next point is, as it regards the hospitality industry, gosh, we need more of it. Gosh, we need to increase it. And gosh, the hospitality industry also has to think a lot harder about living wages for the lower income and even middle managers. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any closing remarks? I'm going to ask for those to stay within a minute here. Nope. Okay, I'm just going to share a few quickly. I appreciate Ken's comments. The, the, the comment that I would add to the intro to Rob's presentation is it's also important that we are thinking about the, the workforce and those that are, are doing the work in the hospitality industry. And I think the city of Monterey plays a significant role in helping to address that. And, and it comes up with what you shared towards the end of your presentation. And I think it was with the question that Dr. Barber asked, when you spoke of infrastructure, housing and transportation. I think those speak to those in a lot of ways, right? If we can create more housing affordability options here in the city of Monterey, we can allow our workforce to live closer to where they work, more likely to walk and bike, increasing quality of life, which was another part of the vision statement. And infrastructure, huge. We need to, we get all this revenue in the city of Monterey. And I think past councils have been focused on trying to figure out how to allocate those funds. I think at the expense of making sure that we're maintaining our infrastructure. And so we're going to hear about this a little bit in the next agenda item around our budget. And then at our council meeting next week, we're going to be having a deeper discussion around infrastructure needs and how bleak the future looks for the city of Monterey as it relates to our infrastructure. Because I think that we've historically failed to make sure that we've set enough funding aside for our infrastructure. And I think that really gets to this core issue as it relates to this conflict that is very real between residents, locals and the tourism industry. I know that you had presented on the factoid from your survey of, I think upwards of eighty percent say that they, they get it. But when, when I'm canvassing and I'm talking to folks, there's a lot of pushback. And actually, I was in Costco yesterday and somebody said, don't pay that money to C Monterey. I, I, I shared with them. I, I use it as an opportunity to express how important it is so that we can pay for these infrastructure needs that, that exist. So I appreciate you and your team and everything that you all do and appreciate the partnership. So I look forward to this continuing on long into the future. So with that, we will go on to agenda item number two, which is our study session item. It's a study primer for FY twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff introduction.
Thank you. And hospitality, you may leave if you want to leave.
No, you can't leave. No, just kidding.
Now's a good time.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We are presenting to you our first semi-official take of our estimated budget for next fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six. As I always state, this is our best estimate at the time of presentation. Actually, tomorrow morning, we, we will have some additional pieces of information that, that will hopefully change the picture also more to marginally to, to, to more increased, better numbers. The, the hospitality industry that just presented to us is, is the, is the backbone of our revenues. As Raffella will show you in one of her slides, twenty-seven percent of our general fund comes from the TOT, the hotel tax. As we learned tonight, six percent of that goes to C Monterey. Another six percent of that discretionary funding goes to the NCIP. So when we look at the overall TOT, it's eighty-four percent that, that serves the general fund, so to speak. Another important component of the hospitality industry is of course that we are collecting another set of significant revenues from the sales tax, which is about fifteen percent of our overall revenues. When, when Raffella comes to that specific slide, I would ask you also to play, pay close attention to our characterization, also how TOT has developed over the past few years, because it also puts into perspective our larger, greater budget numbers that, that, that we are presenting. Last but not least, and that's, that's a point that our Assistant City Manager always likes to make is many cities in California are secure in, in the revenue sources as the main revenue sources are number one property tax. Here in the city of Monterey, our property tax is, is I think our fourth or fifth largest revenue source. And, and it's, it's very helpful, but we, we are a city that contains a lot of large employers. But a lot of those large employers are five for one C threes. When you see that Montage Health required, acquired recently Monterey Spine, that took about eighty-six thousand to a hundred thousand dollars of property tax off the market. Because the way our Montage Health is acquiring different operators in the health sector, it is good for, for the community and there are great service levels. But it takes property off the market because Montage Health is a five for one C three. When you see the Monterey Bay Aquarium acquiring properties that are in, in high density areas such as Canary Row, they purchased Heritage Harbor, et cetera. Those properties are taking off the market for property tax. When you, when you see also, we have the military installations here. And again, we, we welcome there the federal payroll and federal investments in our community. These are also large-scale employers who are not paying property tax. Kent from Middlebury just called and, and spoke about living wages for the hospitality industry and his support for hospitality industry. Middlebury is a five for one C three. And when they acquire properties on convert office buildings into housing, which is absolutely great for the students, these are properties that are taking off the market. So when you look at, at Monterey's dependence on, on sales tax and dependence on hospitality, we have to take good care of those businesses. We have to continue to invest. And that, that is, is part of our sensibilities, sensibilities to, to those market forces as well. So with that, please allow us to, to present to you the big picture. We are curious to hear what you have to say. I'll give away the, the punchline. The budget that we present to you will be balanced. So we, we have figured out ways how to look at income revenues and, and also our expected expenses and could, could are able to make those numbers work. And with that, I, I ask Raffella to please present our FY twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six budget primer study session.
Primer. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and get started and talk about. Actually, before I get started, I just want to kind of mention that I have a couple of my team members here. Yusuf Hana Law, who's a finance manager in charge of revenue. Also have Kyle, who came back in the nick of time. He waited, he waited till most of the, the, the work was done and then he came back and helped finish it up. But Kyle, he's our budget. Welcomed, actually, so I just wanted to recognize them. My other two managers are out today, so, but I'm glad they're here to be able to, to assist and see the big picture. So our big picture right now is that we are so we are continuing to, to see the city's vision for have a strong and prosperous Monterey. And these efforts include us closing the gap between the city's operating expenses and revenues. We've talked about, about that before in the last couple of years, that there's been a structural deficit. But this year, let's just say, was a little challenging to get to that balanced budget, but we did. And also, we're also closely tracking and limiting the expenditures. We're continuing to long, the long-term planning to prepare for larger scale, bigger, bigger picture investments, like some of the things that we had consultants come in the last couple of times I was here to talk about how we move forward with, with the finances in a strategic manner. So right now, some of the things that we know is like the city is facing rising costs. We have goods and services that continue to rise due to inflation and other external factors. Additionally, in twenty-twenty-four, you know, we went into renewed our contracts with the labor groups and all seven of them locking in a four percent increase for FY twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And our revenue growth is modest, is four percent, and it's expected to be above what we projected in FY twenty-five. But while these projections is in line with what our expectations are, and it's a good sign that the stable, we're stable in Monterey, but the expenditures continue to outpace the revenue. So those are the things that we're looking at and we're really kind of working through. So our budget process, we start in February. So we give everybody out a calendar. We start with a budget kickoff meeting. We have all the department heads that are meeting with their budget teams. We all get together and kumbaya. And then we have our meetings that says, what we give them is a five-year budget history. And we give them what their actuals year-to-date are for the current fiscal year and say, basically, take this back to your departments and provide us what, what your new budget is and things that you need for next year. This year, what was different is we use OpenGov, which is our budgeting tool that we have online. There was a few hiccups, as there always are with a new software system. So we managed to get through it for the moment. So departments were, then they gave their estimates from the revenues to finance department. Then the citywide revenues were compiled through the estimates from, we have from our. Then the citywide revenues were compiled through the estimates from we have from our departments, from our trend analysis, from our consultants, my finance revenue staff, and also with city manager's office. Finance, once we get those, we also get amounts payable to CalPERS. And we take that amount and we determine what those retirement contributions will be to O P E P and U A L. And those amounts are allocated throughout each department. So the next thing in the process is we have internal service costs. So that's for I T, for risk management, for workers' comp, our vehicle maintenance and operations, and our vehicle replacements. And they're determined and they're also included in each department's expenditures. For our risk management, we have the liability, which is liability, our workers' compensation, unemployment insurance. Those are internal service charges and those are also allocated to each department. They're based on personnel, they're based on the full time, part time, regular and seasonal part time people and staff. And this departments that have the larger, larger number of staff members, they get more allocated because it's by and then, but we also do an additional adjustment to those for those departments that carry a higher risk for like workers' comp, so fire and police, those kind of things. So resolutions, so our budget team is made up, our core budget team is made up of finance department. We have finance director, assistant finance director, our managers and budget finance analysts. We also have H R, our H R director, assistant H R director and city manager's office. Hans and Nat also on each of us, we meet separately. We go over all the submissions that were given to us. And then after that, we meet with each department separately to go over their numbers that they submitted and kind of have them basically tell us why you're asking for this, if there are increases or decreases, what's going on, what are the changes in your department? After that, our budget team kind of spends, we spend a lot of time meeting with the departments, reviewing, considering their requests and making any initial determinations that regarding the direction of the budget in conjunction with the city's priorities and our available resources. So we get our resources first, which is how much money do we have? Then we get the numbers from the departments to say how much they want. And then we breathe and then we look and see, okay, what where do we need to massage it? Where can we have, where are areas where? Because we can't do everything. We want to, but we can't, we just don't have the resources for it. So that's when the that's when the teamwork really starts working. Okay, so resolutions. So after the department meetings, the budget team starts focusing and we identify historical underused and unused accounts. Sometimes there are accounts in there, you may have a line item that, oh, I'm going to budget a hundred thousand dollars. And historically, for the last five years, you've only spent twenty thousand. But there's another line where you budget twenty thousand and you spend a hundred thousand. Well, there's room for reallocation or there might be areas in people's departments where they just don't spend what they think they're going to spend. And if it's consistent, that's areas where my team goes and looks at, well, you may not need this, you know. And so we go back and when we're looking for changes in ways to decrease, this is what we do. We also, this year, we had to ask the departments to go back to their budgets that they submitted in the O N M and say, can you go and reduce what you submitted by seven percent? The majority, well, actually, every department, including council, thank you, gave us seven percent cuts for. But I knew you wanted to be active participants, you wanted to be, yeah, me too. So we made sure you got your seven percent cut as well. So and with that process, that gave us about additional one point two million dollars in savings in the service and supplies area. After that, we identified positions that have been vacant for like a long time, so some of them more than a year. And we talked about freezing these positions, which also allows us to fully utilize the salary savings from those vacancies. Those vacant positions that are critical, like public safety, firefighters, police officers and engineers will continue to be recruited and funded. So now let's look at the numbers. So after reviewing all the department requests, the total number that came from the expenses was a hundred and twenty five million. After we massaged a little bit, looked at other things and did some changes and then factored in the seven percent. It came down, we identified three point four million of savings and cuts from the general funds top line. The revenue that's projected is a hundred and nine point eight million. So you see that difference between that hundred and twenty five and hundred and nine. This is where we have been working the last couple of months. So our general fund adding that three point four in, we're down to a hundred and twenty one point five in million in expenses. That leaves us with a deficit, structural deficit of more than ten million. So to make up for the deficit, what we intend to do is we're using a higher rate of salary savings. Normally, we'll use about three or four percent, this year we're closer to eight percent. We're restructuring some of our upcoming financial commitments. We're also decreasing some of the contributions to the reserves for the twenty four, twenty five and also for the twenty five, twenty six fiscal years. So this is kind of it in a nutshell of how we come to our numbers without all the details, but just the overall big picture. So at the beginning of twenty four, twenty five, we were projecting an unassigned, i.e. carryover budget to be ten point million. But after we got our had our audit finalized, which is our act for that eight million, well, the ten millions more is eight million. So we started changed our beginning number. So we start with eight million, walking the door, eight million dollars. And then we had our reserve contributions that were planned, which also for this fiscal year, which also includes the mid year adjustment at six point five million coming out. Contingencies and amendments, which is the four million for central fish is also amendments to budget amendments that came through the year totaling to five point nine. And we've also went through and scrubbed, what are we estimating by the end of this fiscal year? So this is the salaries and revenues, it's like we are revenues are doing pretty well, they're on target. There's some areas where it's going to hit more than we expected, which we're grateful for. And there's some savings there, so that's great. And we have savings from not only the salary savings, but we also have some savings from from O N M. So we put all that together, that's seven point two. So now we say, okay, now what is our true number to start with? So we're at two point seven four, five million to start with. And then our projected revenues for twenty five, twenty six, a hundred and nine point eight million. Our projected expenditures, expenses, which includes debt service, a hundred and twenty one going out the door. And then what we are proposing those contribute, our contributions would have been five point seven if we're staying on our normal schedule. So transfers in and out would be seven, that's net seven hundred and forty two thousand. So to decrease the reserves, we put in a four point one million dollars back into the amount to be able to move around and be available for spending by reducing the amount that we're putting into reserves for the next two years. I mean, for this year and next year. And then we're looking at any savings and restructured commitments that we have, the things that we're looking at, a total of eleven point eight. That's a lot of different things going in there, so it's not just one little bucket. It's a lot of different things in there, so we've been working. So we're expecting with that and on the sign, i.e. carryover budget at the end of June thirty, twenty twenty six, to be two million, twenty thousand and some change. So we talked about our top five generator, revenue generators, they remain the same. So our T O T is still the top is twenty seven percent. Fees and charges twenty percent, sales and use fifteen, property taxes, Hans said, is sixteen percent. Users tax five percent, though these are still our top five generators. What's of note is that T O T right now is at twenty seven percent. Three years ago, it was at thirty five percent. And it's been going down systematically every year, which kind of shows that the the growth rate of T O T is kind of starting to flatten out. And so in all, the total top five was at eighty five percent three years ago. It's the top five generating, if I now it's eighty three, it's been eighty three for the last two years. But just to know that the shift is slight, but it's there. And so we actually still are paying attention to what that looks like and what that means for us moving forward. And so this is our T O T kind of allocation, so how you see it, so projected revenue is thirty five point three million. The N C I P portion, which is their sixteen percent is five point six. General fund that's available to us because the M C, M C C V B is six percent allocation that caps at one point eight. And so available for appropriation from the T O T is twenty seven point eight million. This is our expenditure shaped out by departments. We've got public safety, which is police and fire, they take up fifty one percent of the expenditures. Community development has eight percent, parks and recs fifteen, public works nine percent, library three percent, conference center five, and then the admin departments at nine. And keep in mind, some of these departments that have that are larger departments with lower percentages, we have special revenue funds and enterprise funds that they are funded, a lot of their personnel are funded out of there. So why are costs rising? So let's start with our M O U agreements, our salaries and benefits, our M O U agreements. So in twenty four, we came to new agreements with all seven labor groups for four percent for the last, for the next three years. Well, last year and these three. Something to keep in mind is that the two years prior, prior to going back to fiscal year twenty three, that the city also had four percent in their contracts as well. So for this year or for next year, twenty five, twenty six, the wage and benefits increases approximately six million dollars of the general fund. So that's above twenty four, twenty five, so that's one of the increases. And then we have the comps study adjustments that were made last year. That increase for next fiscal year is like one point four million to the general fund. Insurance premiums, our workers' comp insurance has been and liability has been rising. So I just thought it was, I won't call it a fun fact, but it's a fact that our workers' comp insurance has increased like a hundred and thirty percent to five hundred and eleven thousand from three hundred and ninety five thousand, twenty twenty, which is approximately and approximately eighty percent of our workers' comp premiums are going to staff that's being charged in the general fund. For liability and property insurance, the premiums have increased nearly four hundred percent, up to three point three million, up from eight hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty. And again, eighty percent of that cost goes to the general fund. And what's important to know that even though these costs are going up every year with the the market that changed, the way that the market is changing in insurance, we're still getting the best price because a lot of carriers, as you know, insurance are leaving California. So it makes it really difficult to think we're going to get anything less that we have our carriers or our brokers or our sellers, basically just be prepared and expect the insurance base to continue to rise at about twenty, twenty five percent each year. So let's talk about our positions and other funds. So the positions that we're adding this year, the artifact specialist is adding a full time currently. That position is R P T and it's being converted to a full time position. And then there's a senior crafts worker, applications engineer, senior human resource analyst, economic development manager. And so with this, as in the increase of five positions and removal of one regular part time gets a net increase of four point two five. So our special revenues. I got three minutes. Okay, measure P N S. We, I thought it was important to kind of start with what the beginning balances were and projected revenues and expenses. Please note that on some of these expenses, like for measure P N S and N C I P, the staff comes in at later dates with with what's going to be spent out of our projects. So we don't project these expenses because we don't know what they are yet. So but we just, we know what the revenues are supposed to be. So measure P N S, you've got a twelve point three million dollars projected revenues for the year for Thailand's three point nine projected revenues for that. And for measure P N S, if you look, I just wanted you to know, so it may look like, oh, yes, we have twenty two million coming at the end. But note that for measure P N S, there's already fourteen point eight million dollars that are already committed from previous years for projects that just haven't been completed yet. For Thailand's, there's two point two million that's projected already tied up for projects that aren't completed yet. And N C I P has nineteen point five million that's committed already to previous projects. So it's not looking at the fund balance at the end, if they're not windfalls, a lot of that money is already committed. Enterprise funds. Parking and Marina are doing well, as you can see, their revenues far exceed their projected expenses in those two accounts. Sewer is right on, they're right on the money, just under about less than two hundred thousand for that. They have had rates increase, so as those rates continue to be phased in, that will actually change and those will be turned right side out. Cemetery continues to be, they need help. So they are being subsidized, any any loss for any of the enterprise funds as well as special revenue funds really kind of lands on the general fund to subsidize those funds. But that is something that we are still constantly looking at, how to create more revenue in a cemetery, how to reduce expenses. That's something that's actually also very much on everyone's mind and we are looking at those. Internal service funds, as you can see, there are three of the six are start off with upside down. And that's been a longstanding thing. So the allocation for these, if you notice that the projected revenue and expenses and most of these, they mirror each other as they ship. That means that the allocation is being handled the way it should. So that part has been fixed throughout the city. So now what we need to do at some point is go back to and take care of those negative beginning balances so that they'll all be right side. But in this, it's not something to do today, but it is something that we are just keenly aware of. Thirty one seconds, reserve contributions. Okay, so our projected unassigned fund balance, the reason for economic development will remain at twenty percent for the economic uncertainty contribution. So and despite the constraints that we have on a city, but on a budget, we're still, we we want to still continue to do the contributions to the reserve funds. What we proposing is that for this I gave myself twenty minutes, give me three more minutes, time me, give me time, three more minutes. So what we're still proposing to do is take fifty percent of the amounts that we normally would do for all the other funds. And so for this year and also for next year, because that helps put money back on and on the tables for us to be able to use elsewhere. But again, we're leaving the economic uncertainty fund untouched and keep that remain, that keeps at the twenty percent. And so I think we talked about this earlier, the unprojected on assigned fund balance at the end of June of twenty twenty six would be two million. So the twenty five, twenty six budget includes three point seven million towards the reserves after it's all said and done. Includes the economic uncertainty reserve contribution will be one point five million. We are, some of that other shifting that we did is we're recommending some of the construction projects that are being, instead of coming out of the general fund, we're taking them out of some of the reserve accounts that we've are. We basically have already saved money into the conference center facility, sports center facilities and technology. So taking some of the money out of those accounts, so that we've already set aside for those issues, I mean, for those projects and those things. So that we free up money that's current year, yeah, current year, current year allocations. So basically, we found another another stream to actually tap into so that we could actually free up some money for that. So this is what those numbers look like for the reserve allocations. Again, the economic uncertainty remains at twenty percent, that's approximately one point five million. Pension reserve is five hundred thousand, again, these are fifty percent of the normal. Three seventy five for conference center, two fifty for sports center, five eighty four and some change for technology, one twenty five for city facilities. Reserve, public safety reserve is also one twenty five and the library is also one twenty five. Since I can't read this because I can't see that well, but this is just to kind of let you know where we'll end up. This is the beginning balance from our reserve accounts, this is in the first column. The second columns are the revised contributions for this fiscal year. And where we'll end up in twenty twenty five is the next, and then our contributions that we're going to add for next fiscal year. And that second and last column are the uses, the places where we would actually go, like I said, conference center, sports center, we're taking money out of those and doing some projects out of these accounts. And so that still gives you your projected year in balance for those. Lastly, our historic look on the reserves. I'm just going to go front to last, if you look at the first year, twenty twenty, we had only two reserve accounts and we had thirteen million. Because we've been diligently working on these reserves and making contributions to that, we have actually put in an additional twenty five million over the last five years and we are at. I can't see that number. Thirty nine million.
Or thirty nine million, yeah, I hope it's not thirty nine thousand, thirty nine million, one hundred and eleven thousand.
Right, okay. And so I recommend, all right, okay, so our recommendations. And so I recommend, all right, okay, so our recommendations that you receive the primer. And uh. And there's a, right, right, like Gumi. I'm sorry, private joke. Um so um to review, I mean, to talk about, we just talked about the primer and then also for um give any direction or request. Adjustments.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation, Rafael. Appreciate you. We'll open it up to council for questions.
Um I'll let somebody else go first.
Maybe Dr. Barbara, I think Dr. Barbara has to leave at like thirty or so if she has questions, I'm just, a little bit idea.
Uh so, no, thank, no, I appreciate you remembering that. Thank you um for all of that, your hard work for um. Your team and also for all the department heads. I appreciate understanding the process of what you went through. So we understand the department heads and the parts that they play. Um had a few questions that, and some I was just trying to get um, I get some uh clarity on. So I guess let me start on the carryover, the unassigned carryover. It was ten million in the beginning, but then after audit, it became eight million. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I cannot. So we, we projected that it was going to be ten after we scrubbed and looked at everything that we were um savings. And actually during our audit, the first two drafts of our audit report actually had ten million. And so after they finalized and went through everything else, there it was not, it was eight. So um I'm sure that that too is probably in another bucket someplace, but it just was not what we expected, but.
So basically, they found less money than you had proposed as a ten million. Is that what I'm understanding?
In that, in that particular, what's available, I'm pretty sure that that extra two is sitting in a bucket that's already committed somewhere else.
Okay, and I know you talked about projected expenses. You had said a hundred and twenty five million, but then we saw the one twenty one, a hundred and twenty one million. So is it the one twenty one? I just want to get clarification on that.
So when the departments gave us their initial, it was one twenty four. A one twenty four point nine, something like that. So after we did the scrubbing and and moving and and massaging, we got it down to one twenty.
The one twenty, okay, I see your clarification. And then I know we've talked about this every time we come to uh doing a, this uh budget primer is about the cemetery. And of course, we, we don't look to make money off of it and we talk about the expenses and the revenues and. And trying to see how we're going to do it, but it looks like it's getting further apart because now we're about four hundred thousand. So I'm just curious as to what the plan looks like for that.
At some point, more than likely, we'll have to bring the cemetery into the general fund. Our prior auditors actually did that one year because it's what they call a going concern issue, which means that it does not have the ability. To sustain itself. So at some point, we'll have to look at that. It's, it's, it's not a today problem, but it is a, a problem that we do need to look at. If we can't find an increase in revenues or um reduce expenditures anymore, that's something we'll definitely have to look at.
Okay, um also, you talked about technology and security um uh being able to take from some of the reserves. So that you can be able to um uh transfer or utilize them for purchases for dealing with technology and security. Can you talk a little bit about what that technology and security would be? Because some of the different reserves, one of the reserves was a technology reserves, but some of the other reserves were from other reserves that weren't necessarily connected to that. So I was just curious as to um how that aligns.
Okay, so let me spend, get my numbers on target. So this current year, there are eight million for, let's just, and this is just an example. So IT has like an eight million dollar budget. So it's being allocated of that, there is, I think, two point five of that, which is new projects. Some of those projects can be sparsed out because some of them deal with parks, some of them deal with security cameras and it's different areas. Um like parking can, can take some of those, some are being allocated to Thailand, some would be allocated to wherever they're being spent. And so we can um use part of the money that we've already set aside in the reserve account for IT. Instead of saying, let's give you new money, let's take them, some of that money here. Because after we sparse it out to those different departments, that two point five was down to, I think, one point four, something like that. I'm making this number up, but it was down like that. And so we could take the one point four out of our general fund reserve and under I um information technology and move it over, just transferred over to the IT department. So now we're not creating new money, we're actually using money that are, we already save. So in, in layman's term, instead of say, I need to get a new job, I've got savings, let me use my savings account to pay for this, if that makes sense.
Uh yes, um uh but it, it sounds like that the technology and security pieces that are being purchased are kind of. In those particular areas, like you were saying, like in the parks and rec or whatever, in those, in those areas, is that what I'm understanding?
For the most part.
Okay.
So, so there are, there are two major projects in IT this year. Number one project is um, we, we have to start to replace our aging fiber network. Uh the fiber network is over twenty years now old and the fiber is falling apart. So five hundred thousand dollars will go into investing into the fiber network. And, and then following uh that, another three years in a row, we have to reinvest to uh uh redevelop the existing fiber network. Uh the, the second, or the, the largest project right now is a, is a citywide camera replacement of security cameras. And we have um uh I think about eight hundred sixty five security cameras that we need to replace. Uh they are located mainly in the parking division. That is when the finance director talked about, we are parsing those costs out. A bulk of those cameras will be reimbursed through the parking fund uh for us. But we also have areas where we have general fund expenses, for instance, in the sports center, in um uh in the harbor. Uh we, we will go to the Marina Thailand funds to get reimbursed there. Uh so our camera systems are uh and also in, in our police station, uh the police shift is left conveniently. The um uh so I think the total number amount of cameras is eight hundred sixty five. And the total cost of that one is over one point two million. But then there will be reimbursement, parking fund, Marina fund, uh Thailand funds, et cetera. So these are the two largest, then there are a bunch of very small projects anywhere ranging from eight thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars. That, that will uh improve our, our um uh infrastructure to a degree. One project that stands out that I want to uh mention here, we want to map all our city facilities, recreation centers, city buildings. Uh in case of to, to harden security, in case we have a, a critical incident where we need to know. Where are all the rooms, where can people hide in the rooms? So we, we, we also prepare the city for that. This is a system that we share also with MPUSD where they have done uh an active shooter, uh GIS, a collection of their facilities as well. We are doing that as well. It's, it's a small project, seventy five thousand dollars, but it will help us also to protect our um employees and residents as well with, with that type of interest. So that's kind of an overview of all the different IT projects.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And last question. Um I, I know this, this was very similar for last year, but the fifty one percent that for the police and fire for the expenses. Um how does that actually compare to like the other cities that are around us? And as far as the percentage of expenditure, I was just curious about that.
So I have not looked up at other cities, but just from my um experience working up and down and auditing, um that's pretty typical. Um public safety usually has the higher costs as far as the personnel costs, so about fifty percent. And, and other cases is, is more kind of sometimes sixty percent. So that's not unusual. Um I think the part that we talked, I remember talking about this last year, that is a little unusual difference is that fire actually brings in revenue. Um because we have contracts for several different cities that brings in revenue. So sometimes their expenses may look uh even higher, but um we, they have offsetting revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who would like to go next? Please, Conferrest.
Thanks for the explanation and I admired your demand of all the swapping of the, the interest on the funds.
Is your mic on? Mike, is your mic on?
Sorry, I said, great job on the accounting and I was very impressed that. You don't get swayed at all by the swapping of the funds within the departments and loaning and then the interest on the loans. And I admired your work. Great job. You, a couple, simple, hopefully, simple questions. What is a fund one oh five?
One oh five is the, it's, it's still con- considered part of the general fund, but a few years ago, the parks and recs, they um added five percent fee on top of some of their fees. That goes directly to help fund um facilities um for the parks and recs departments to actually do some of those repairs and maintenance. So we keep that separate so that we're actually constantly tracking it.
Thank you. And then I presume um the bit about um a PG&E loan is that um. I'm sure they loaned to us, we probably didn't loan to them, or what, what was that all about? And every time I read PG&E, of course, I'm thinking of undergrounding and, and infrastructure and. I'm just curious is um.
Honestly, um so loan happened in twenty seventeen, so I don't know the details off the top of my head. I'll have to go back and look at the details so I can get that back to you.
I appreciate that. And um we were looking at, on page, packet page fifty nine. You were laying out the differences in the. In the projections. And I, I think this is for the future year that we're aiming toward. And there were some benefits, like the, the Thailand's was projecting out one million ahead. And then parking was three million. And then if you combined Marina and the cemetery, that was one million. Am I understanding that correctly? Am I going in the right direction? That there were actually some. Not sure. Now, can you pull up the page, please? Page fifty nine, which one?
Well, it's page, packet page fifty nine, it, it's on the slide too. Um so those are, those are the revenues and expenses. So um I did present it in the, on the PowerPoint as well. But um I just added the beginning and ending numbers. So we are projecting for parking, twelve million dollars in revenue this year and we have nine point seven million dollars in expenses. Um sewer fund, three point three million in revenues and three point two in expenses. Marina fund, four million dollars in revenues and two point five in expenses. And this is where I was talking about the cemetery, that we are projecting two point, two hundred ninety eight thousand in revenue, but seven hundred eighty three thousand in expenses.
Do you anticipate that this might be a trend? I, I know I'm asking a lot, but um and where I'm going with this is, can these? Extra uh leftover, leftover money? Can um, can we, here's the main question. Can we float a bond that doesn't attach to parcels that, that obligates to um our capital raise funds? And our um special revenue funds with these additional, with these unspent allocations? Is, is there enough in there that we could float um a bond from our expected revenues? Over a certain amount of years to say hypothetically, fix the wharf?
Okay, so I'm going to start with the special revenue funds and pretty much that answer is no. Special revenue funds, just as the name of special revenues is, we get money to do a certain thing. And so we can't play with that money or, or float money from special revenues. For enterprise is a little bit different. And if you don't mind, I want to defer that for the council meeting on the twentieth, when I come back to talk about financing options.
Sure.
And I'll actually include that as um.
Great.
As whether or not we can or not.
Right, because there's a piece of my mind that goes, well, Marina is close to the wharf, Thailand's is close to the wharf. Is there any, any flexibility there?
So I will say this, we want to be in, and we're, we are doing some things where we can do loans from inter, inter fund loans. As you were saying earlier, between the general fund, the parking fund and. The thing that I want us to kind of um be mindful of is that's a temporary bandaid. And so we don't want to, I mean, it, it's okay to do something to fix it right now and, and we have a plan while we're working on the plan. But what we don't want to do is continue to do that. And then the next thing you know, five years down the line, parking fund has no money. Right. So we just want to be careful how we address that and kind of address the actual real problem as opposed to, we, we can solve the issue today. But we, like now, we're going to spend the next six months really looking into the general fund. How do we fix this deficit so that we can't? Because we, all the maneuvers and things that we did this year, they're not going to be available to us next year. So we're just trying to fix the real problems for right now.
That is the question, is it illusory money? Is it projected in the future money or is it really? No, we're, we're band-aiding it together with, with that extraneous money and I, I appreciate your answer. And I think. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Consermer Garcia.
Thank you, Rafael and team for all the work. Um couple of questions. I think this question is a variation of um a question that I've asked in the past. Um stepping away from actual numbers, but just a general sense or their categories besides the obvious some that you pointed out. Um in your presentation, others that have come up in previous council meetings. Other maybe not so obvious categories that are slowly raising a flag that you think we should be paying attention to.
Why are you trying to give me in trouble, Dino? Um, I think I've pointed out over the, over the years, I think I've pointed out most things that alarm me. Um I meet weekly with Hans and that and the things that I look at, that I think need to be aware, that I think they need to be aware of. We have those conversations on a regular basis. As I was just mentioning, not using extra reserves that are sitting or um extra fund balance that are sending in enterprise funds on a, as an answer to. That concerns me. Um. I look at our, our O and M, our, our services and supplies. For the most part, we run kind of lean here. Um most departments, like it was a struggle for them to get that seven percent. And somebody gave me sixty dollars less than what they were supposed to and I went and got my sixty dollars. So um but some, but some was like exchange, let me give you more revenues if I can get more revenues. But so it's a struggle because you, 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 you tamper that with, I want to provide the services. I want to provide the level of service to that the city, the community actually deserves with, I don't have the capacity. I don't have the staff, I don't have enough time, I don't, so those things, these are things that I look at is, okay, we, 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 we plan to do so much. But the capacity of staff, and this is just my own personal, this is not the finance director, this is Rafaela. This is my personal viewpoint is we don't have the capacity to do everything that we put on the table. And at some point, you're either burning everyone out and they're leaving. Or we just don't have um the, the, we don't have the resources to put behind it. So it would be lovely to get all these projects done. Um but we don't have the engineers to get them done. It would be lovely to get whatever it is done, but trying to make sure that we are um not putting all the money aside to do these projects that we can't get to. While we're not putting that money to something that can be done today. So those are things that keep me awake at night, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's um an issue for everyone else. So again, stop trying to get me in trouble.
So, yeah, no, thank you. Um and, and I, I appreciate your, your response and, and looking at it in, in very general terms as well. But um can I then um summarize your response? In maybe saying that reserve funds is one of your top concerns or, or the use of?
No, not the reserve funds. Um because we knew going in, when we put the reserves in, that this is, this is how we start putting money aside and we're doing a great job at that. But I also knew looking at these numbers and being very ambitious, that this is not sustainable long term with everything else we have. with everything else we have going on. So now we're, to me, we're at a point where, okay, how do we maintain contributions to the reserves and also continue to, to do our O and M, to do our maintenance, to do our, our, our service, to pay our staff? So I'm looking at how do we continue to do everything that's on our plate and fund it? So for me, that's, that's the big picture. How do we fund all the things that we need? And what's, and we have to look at, if we have to reduce things, what's the priority list? What do we reduce? Where do we do it? Because at any point, does someone put something on the table and say, I want, I want, I want? It's like, okay, we can give you whatever you want, but at a cost, what are you willing to give up?
Okay. Shifting gears a little bit away from, from figures and this, this question goes back also to, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before. I know you and your team had community meetings around the budget and getting feedback. So what does that look like for this fiscal year?
For this fiscal year, we didn't do community engagement. Part of the reason we didn't do it is because we had, we had three, three sessions, of which we had about 10 people per session. And I'm grateful that both of you showed up and participated. So basically we had 30 people. We had great numbers on the survey. I think it was about 600 people that participated on the survey. I think that the involvement is great when you can do it in purpose, in in person and actually ask questions and really get a true understanding of how government works, finances work. I think most citizens don't realize that you can't use every bucket to pay for everything. If it's a special revenue, you can't just throw it in and pay for two cops out of that. You just, you can't do that. You're not allowed to. Or if you have CDBG money, if they're giving you money to do wherever that source is coming from, you have to spend it on that, no matter how, you know, flush you are in one area or how much in a deficit you are in the other, you have to do. So actually being able to have that conversation and allowing people to understand and do exercises, I think that that's great. But it's having the time and having the visibility and having the community actually show up to those events.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I guess I'll just add a comment there as, in general terms. Maybe that's an area where we can all support in trying to figure out, right? What, what is the best way to engage community in an intentional way? To not only provide the education around how a, a city budget functions, right? And what, what are the challenges and all that? And so provide the education there, but also get the feedback at the same time. So, all right. Thank you so much.
Please.
Yes, Rafael, thank you. Good presentation. And thank you for the deep dive. On one of the questions on the, the slide I have, you provided an amount for the conference center loan. That's the debt service account 310, debt service fund of 546,936, and that's annual. If I remember that right, that's from a loan we made for the remodel and the interest payment, because it's not in the debt service summary.
No, it's not in the summary, but it will be in the final budget. I don't have that date off the top of my head, but in our last actually printed budget books, I added a table in there that has the debt service that has the end gate there for each one of our debt service that we have, so that you can see that. So I will make sure that you have those dates.
Okay, great. And you know, that's helpful. Once you retire debt and that, that's good. I, I wanted to say, you know, when you were talking about the transfers from one account.
I apologize. You spoke, maybe, can you, I think he's talked about the sports center, not the conference center.
You're right.
Yes.
I said sports center, I meant conference center.
No, I think he said conference center and then sports center.
Okay. So what it says here is conference center loan.
And I think it's the sports center loan, because the 546 is the, is the sports center loan number. And that expires in 2031. What are we praying to reach? It's, it's about nine years left.
Okay. So I know we have a loan on the sports center.
Yes.
And I know we have lots of loans on the conference center, because didn't we have a loan to finish the parking lot? Or the, not the parking lot, the out in front of the conference center, Portolo Plaza. Didn't we have a loan on that? Or is that where we went to see Monterey? To close the?
Yes, we went to see Monterey to get for 20 years, $250,000 back. That was the number that added up to $7 million. We, so I think that there must be a mistake in, in the content, in, in this, in a general report, we will cross check that, but the 546 is pretty much the number that we pay for the sports center. And all the sports center people are nodding their head. So.
Yeah. And so there's no, no fault to anybody, but it's good, it's good to, you know, to identify it and talk about it. But so what you're saying is we have a loan on the sports center and we pay that and its obligation is done when? 13th or 2031?
It comes sooner than, than anyone thinks and it's, it's yeah, but later than the Parks and Rec Director one, but I think.
Exactly the way to think.
I think it's like 2031, 2032, around that timeframe.
Yeah.
So, but, but again, 2031, 2032, that will really help us with, with the, with the, with the cost also in operating.
And I think that that, that's the essence of like everybody that's managing a household and house payment and lots of things, sending a kid to college, all of that. You know, when you retire the debt, that's hallelujah, that closes the gap. And so that's a big figure. So that will be a good thing. I wanted to recount to what you were saying when you talked about the transfers. And I so relate because in the old days of accounting, when I had money to take, to take care of and keep track of, we called them cost centers. So we don't call them that way anymore in, you know, parlance of, of accounting. But I just want to say that the transfer from one account to another is not abnormal at all.
No.
Because these are budgeted amounts authorized by the council to that department. And when you realize that there's too much money in one of those sub-accounts for that department, you re, reallocate and readapt, but you're spending within your authority of the city council. But I'm reminded by the, the things that we were taught was there had to be a nexus between what you were doing with that money and the purpose of spending that money in which account it was coming for. And if, if anybody's trying to do a transfer that doesn't fit that nexus.
Correct.
Doesn't fit within the authorization, that's when bells and whistles go off and that's why we have audits. So I just wanted to say I connect with that and so appreciate the, the explanation for the fund transfers. This is a prelude to, a couple of weeks, we'll see more, more deep dives. So I'll have a few more questions, but I just want to say thank you very much for the explanation of the transfers and this overview. And it sounds like we might've discovered, you know, more money that belongs to the sports center debt side rather than the conference center side, but we still owe the money. So unfortunately, it's, it's still.
Still money leaving the house. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. But Karen wants it retired soon. So that's a good attitude to have.
We'll work with Karen.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Rafael.
Okay. And no questions for me at this time. So we're statements? Rafael's real confused right now. We'll go ahead and open up for public comment. I got, I got something to say. Don't worry. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna come around to it. So open up for public comment at this point. So for folks on Zoom, if you want to use the raise hand function, in the meantime, I'll check with folks in the chamber. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? So if I, if you want to speak on this item, I would ask for you to step up to the left of the podium. Anybody else in the chamber? All right. So we'll go ahead and cut it off and then we'll check on Zoom and do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have one person on Zoom. So we're going to start in the chamber. Yes, sir.
Hand turn the microphones up.
Hello, I'm Daniel. Just a question on the shifting of funds. The amount being off by $2 million, will that be able to be looked up and found of where that money is at? Or it seemed like there's a $2 million misplace, misplacement of money that probably should be accounted for? Because when funds get shifted around too much, you start to lose the bottom line totals. And it's not really, I mean, it's not uncommon, but it's not the best method. Once this number start getting a little bit offset and out of balance, it's kind of a danger zone to not be able to account for money that's being shifted around too much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we'll go to our Zoom caller.
You can go ahead, Tom.
Yes, thank you. I have to start with an admission. I, you know, I haven't been involved in this process for well over a decade. So some of my comments and questions might be rather ignorant, which won't come as a surprise to Hans probably. One of the things I've, I've commented on in the past though, is about the cost of the fire department responses to medical calls. I was spending a lot of time in Southern California where my mother-in-law lived. She's passed away since I was down there a month ago. But every time the, the 911 was called for a medical response, we got billed for that. So the, I know the insurance down for her was paying for that. And I'm just curious about the prospects of the city of Monterey doing that. And I, I, I've heard qualitative responses to this question I've had, but I haven't really received quantitative responses. So anyhow, it might be something that should be ferreted out a little bit better. Back many, many years ago, a couple of decades ago, there was a large cost study done throughout the entire city system. And not that I would be a proponent of duplicating that, but I'm just curious as to whether or not that's been considered to re-true up the fees for services that the city provides? Or is that just on, on an ad hoc basis? And then lastly, I, I should have started with this, a very good presentation, and I really appreciated that. And the staff report was well-written too. As Rafaela stated, what concerns me, it's the rate of the increase in costs versus the rate of increase in revenues. And as anybody who's worked with math and statistics a little bit knows, it's the slope of those lines. And obviously, the, the slope of the line of expenses over time is steeper than the slope of the line for revenues. And one time money doesn't do anything to correct that. It might, it might stave off the inevitable for some years out into the future, but you still have these converging lines going out. So we, we should keep mindful of the fact that it's the slope of those two lines. We have to decrease the rate of increases for expenses and try to increase the rate of increase for the revenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for the public comments. Steph, did you want to reply, respond to any of those?
Yeah. The, the question about the $2 million, I think the $2 million was a number that we saw as ending balance projection. And so it was a, a, a number in the positive, but maybe Rafaela you've.
But I wanted to say with that is that the $10 million was an estimate. The $8 million is an audited number. So it's not money that's lost. It is money that the auditors have went through all our books, all our records and have said, this is where we landed, you know, with everything. So there's nothing that is, oh my God, you know, we're 200, $2 million missing. We're not $2 million missing. We just, it's an estimate. Estimates are trued up basically when you have your audit. Tells you what actually happened. It's verified by third party.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
The second information is the sports center loan expires May 1st, 2032. Awesome. So, so then that is that. And Tom's input with respect to the cost study. Yes, we actually just looked at the cost study a couple of weeks ago. That was the one that, that Tom was referring to that was done in the late 90s. And, and we looked at that for inspirational purposes, just to, to see what, what, what we did in, in those years. It's, it's, it's time to look at that. However, our, our tools have significantly improved since the 90s, when we needed the firm to tell us what it cost us to do certain jobs and work orders, et cetera. But it's, it's probably worthwhile to take a comprehensive approach with that. Air services is something that, that I think we, 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 we should be open to investigate. The council though, this is not a popular thing to implement because constituents, when they all of a sudden have to start paying for services they haven't paid for, and will, will, will feel that, that pain a little bit. So we, we, we can certainly look at, look at that in their pros and cons in doing that. And Thomas right, and, and Gino, Congressman Garcia spoke about this as well. And we need to find a way of decreasing our expenditures. And we need, we, we need to find a way to, to at least not lose for the revenues. And that will be a task that I foresee starting July 1st to come up with some additional rules that we have in our toolkit to manage those two slopes that Tom was describing.
Thank you for that. Okay. Back to the council. Any last minute comments? I'm going to ask you to keep it to.
Uh, no, thank you for Rafaela and all of her staff. And we'll see more in a couple of weeks. So.
I would just say, right, we have got to reduce expenses and increase the revenues. And maybe the economic prosperity professional that.
A great name.
It's a technical name.
That's going to be on boarded, can really work at expanding the business attraction and expanding what we rely on past hospitality and agriculture. And I, it, we've got to do something with IT. At the Salinas City Council meeting, one of the council people sent Mr. Vrahas mentioned that 90% of the STEM college graduates, I'll say any degree, are leaving. So it seemed to me when I heard him say that, that we really need to expand our IT attraction. And they would, they would pay property tax too. So we, we've got to keep jobs for our young people in that area. Expand or diversify our, our economy and get more business in. And I, I think we really need to look at IT. We're, we're the stepchild of Silicon Valley. It's, it's a natural nexus. Thank you.
So quickly, just a few comments. Thank you to the budget team for all the work and, and prepping for this. I know that there's been a lot of work, I would argue probably more so than, than normal because of the, the deficit that we're, we were looking at. So thank you to, to the budget team and the exec team and, and city manager's office for that work. And I also want to thank our entire city staff, every single person on our team. You are the lifeblood of what allows for all these amazing services that we have in the city of Monterey. So although it might look bleak, I think it's important to make sure that we're uplifting the incredible work that's being done, which is why the council approved a, a, I think a pretty solid increase for our workforce over the course of last year, this year and, and next year. And so I don't want anybody to take a look at that and see that it wasn't deserved or, or needed. We need to stay competitive in the market. So I just wanted to help balance that out because it can, it's a big number and it, and it can look scary. But that's the cost of doing business and making sure that we can help maintain stabilized costs over time, particularly with recruitment and retention efforts. So just kind of wanted to share that as a, as an onset. I, I echo my colleagues' sentiments here. I think we still need to figure out how to crack that community engagement nut. I know that we made some efforts last year and I appreciated the team's efforts in engaging in those. I, I, I don't know what that is, and, and I think we can maybe have that conversation more later, but I, I just wanted to echo that in regards to the meeting on the 20th, when we're going to be looking at different ways of funding the different infrastructure needs. My ask is if it's possible for us to look at options as it relates to vacancy tax, property transfer tax as potential options for us to increase revenue in, in support of our infrastructure needs. New positions, the, the new positions that were listed would be helpful to understand a little bit more context in regards to the reasoning justification around those positions. So that would be great when we come back for the budget in regards to what those look like. So that would be great when we come back for the budget in regards to what those look like. And then I know that we did this in the past, and, and I'm assuming maybe it's not here because we're just doing the primer or the primer. But it would be good to see a five-year forecast in regards to like what we're looking at for, for revenue versus expenditures. So I think that's it for me. And with that, we are going to go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Yeah.